Okay, Margaret, we're ready.
All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Locust Valley Board of Education Special Meeting. Today is July 28th, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have to do a motion to call it to order, Ken?
No.
Okay. I'd like everyone to stand up and say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so this morning, the purpose of this board meeting is to discuss and vote upon resolutions for NISBA, the New York State School Board Association's annual convention. The annual convention will be held in Syracuse this year in October, and it is the right and the responsibility for all participating boards and board members, it's a dues-paying membership, to pass any resolutions that are important to boards or their districts or their region for consideration for the NISBA team to eventually work on and lobbying. So that's the purpose of today's meeting, and I'd like to open up the meeting and start with just going through the resolutions, just to remind the board, these are propositions, not resolutions, I'm sorry, they're not laws, they're not policy, they're simply the direction that we're asking NISBA to take when they do their lobbying. And it doesn't mean that if we pass it today that this will even get to the October meeting, there's a process in between. These resolutions would have to be approved, and then they would be brought to the convention where the entire state, all of the board members who are in attendance or voting members would come and they would debate, they would be presented, they would debate, and they would vote on them. If then they were passed, these would be items that NISBA would lobby on our behalf in the coming legislative year. So that's basically the process.
Margaret?
Yep.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Could you, when you go through and read them, are you also able to tell us what district and/or organization put each of the resolutions forward for consideration?
Yes. So right now, all of the propositions that we're going to go through have been approved by Hicksville, Carl Place, Massapequa, Saichem, and we're considering them today. Saichem did not pass number two, the specialized advocacy one, they did not pass that one, but all others passed. And number two is the one that, when we go through it, I suggested that we don't even have to vote on, but I'm only one person, just because I felt that it was a proposition that was very specific to the district who wrote the proposition's needs. And, you know, we have a healthy relationship with our advocates, and I don't want to, you know, lobby for anything like that, to have oversight over that. I think that the process of having a specialized advocate has been in place for many, many years without incident and protected by law, and I think that it should stay in the local control. So that was my reasoning for proposition two.
And I'm sorry, I don't think I was, I appreciate the list of districts that support them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm curious to know, as we go through, we can just do it one by one as we read them, what district and/or organization has put forward each of the individual, like, someone wrote the resolution to propose it, right?
Massapequa wrote them.
Massapequa wrote all of them.
She wrote them all.
Okay.
Yeah. The board president wrote them. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Massapequa wrote them all. With, you know, with, obviously their legal counsel and all of that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll go through. The first one is Proposition 1, the Reserve Fund Amendments to Eliminate Use of Short-Term Borrowing. Are there any questions or discussion?
No, you need to.
Okay. So basically, we're not going to do a motion for each one in this round, we're going to come to consensus in this round, and then we're going to pull the ones that we have consensus on, which it has to be four out of the five of us, and then we're going to put it into the final resolution. Okay, George? Because I think you popped on a little later. Can I just get an idea of, you know, is there any opposition? I guess we'll go that way, because there's five of us.
No.
No opposition.
Nope.
No.
Thank you. Proposition 2, we are not even going to vote on, that was the Special Education Advocacy Oversight. Proposition 3, Local Control, this is a two-part resolution, it's voted on in one, but it will be submitted by Massapequa in two forms, two forms, actual forms that they have to fill out. This is local control, this is basically that the New York School Board support proposals, guidelines, annual legislation that is in favor of local school district control and/or regional by county control over matters pertaining to safety protocols and operations regarding the prevention of communicable illnesses. Is there any discussion?
Do you have?
I just have a question. So this is?
Yes.
The Proposition 3 then is just about, like, the sex education aspect of it, or with the curriculum, is it about the curriculum as a whole?
No, local control is about operations, prevention of spread of communicable illnesses, what we basically just lived through.
Okay.
So what we found, you know, through many of the discussions, was that, you know, like, even just on Long Island, there were towns that, you know, had high incidence rates and towns that didn't, and we were all being lumped in to follow one guideline and protocol. We would like a little bit more latitude to say, hey, you know, in our community, this is what we did, and just basically the way that the government, the governor at the very beginning of 2020 came down, and he gave us guidelines, and we put things in place that worked for our district, we're asking for that local control.
Okay.
That's basically what it is.
Okay.
All right.
I will, I will, I do, the only concern I, the only concern I have is, it can't be looked at in isolation, right? It's a, it's a collection of resolutions that they're building a certain policy and philosophy off of, that's what they're after, and I get it. Proposition 3, the local control, they kind of reference communicable diseases, but then four, five, four and five roll right into questions about questioning immunizations overall, chickenpox, polio, mumps, measles, those kinds of things. So what I get concerned about is the rolling back of all of those immunizations, and I get concerned about whether or not we're going to have Nassau County Executive who comes in and who doesn't believe at all in science and doesn't believe at all in medical, you know, rational, and says, okay, well, we're going to roll it back, chickenpox is communicable, but I'm not worried about it.
Right.
And then everyone's going to have chickenpox again. We suddenly had the first case of polio because someone, we haven't had polio in how many years in this country. So that's where I get, that's where I'm a little worried about the package of resolutions as a whole, is I see the cascading going on, so that's why.
So this does not get packaged in. Every single one of these goes in separately, so when we get to Proposition 4, we can either say no, or we can pull it and write our own and change the wording.
Got it.
So that, that, it's very distinct, like, they, so when it gets up to NISBA, NISBA can say, you know, no to three of them, they're not looking at this as a package.
Got it.
They, it's, every single one is individual, and we can say, listen, you know what, it was written, there's the bones of it, but we want to insert this, or we want to extract that, we can, we can do that as each proposition individual, excuse me, individually.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go on, Michelle.
Okay, so what's the purpose of us putting this forth now if NISBA has the overall say? Is it like?
Support. We then show collective support to NISBA as all voting members in NISBA.
Okay.
We're saying, hey, advocacy lobbying group, your districts believe that Proposition 3 is a reasonable course of action for you to take. They could ultimately choose to go another direction, but we can then at least say as a, as an organization, we've gone ahead and. but we can then at least say as an organization, we've gone ahead and proposed this, and we've supported this proposal.
So it's really like, we're giving our wish list of the stuff that we would like to see happen, and then hopefully they'll take whatever, you know, whatever the majority says of school districts and put that into their own play then?
That's right.
And this is a formalized process. I mean, this is something that school districts are now doing across the entire state. They are due by August 1st, there's a deadline, there's a specific date. This is nothing like, I don't want to say out of the ordinary, but this is an annual process that hopefully, you know, will continue to, you know, send out propositions on anything and everything that we encountered over the year.
Right. And the other thing is, like, a few years ago, we put one forward for interaction between staff and students via social media, and it was denied. You know, so just, like, you put it in, it doesn't mean it's going to get anywhere, you know? So that's, it's, it's, they basically are a lobbyist group. NISBA is our lobbyist group.
Right.
And if we don't voice and say, hey, listen, there's a collective of us or just one of us, because you don't have to put it in with anybody else, you could put it in by yourself, it brings it to the forefront of the conversation. If it gets to the convention, there's debate. There's, you know, some of these propositions can be debated for an hour and a half. People have open mic, they go up, and, you know, that's something I'll talk about at the end. We have to start thinking if we are going to be able to send a representative from Locust Valley, because it is in Syracuse, and it is a full weekend, it's a commitment. But that's basically where, you know, our role would be, to go in there and be in that room and be a voting member. So it's basically like a, it is a convention, it's like a political convention, but it's for NISBA. And that's, this is where they decide the direction of their lobbyist efforts. So does that answer it, Michelle? Okay. Proposition 3, local control, do we have consensus, or do we...
Did you even discuss the second part of that, Margaret?
I'm sorry, no. Opposes mandates that require school districts and curriculum regarding matters that do not pertain to standard academic subjects. So that's the whole proposition. And again, if you're uncomfortable with it, we can split it, or we can reword it.
I'm good to go.
I would prefer to split that off.
Okay.
What are we looking to split?
The opposed school board from State Ed that requires school districts to implement curriculum regarding matters not pertaining to standard academic set, that's a very broad, large statement, and that's concerning to me, that's a slippery slope for me. So I'm curious to see, you know, again, that's a question of that, as Margaret said, the conference period of fleshing that out, so I'd rather have that as a separate discussion. I'm okay with saying, let's have that go forward, but I'd like it to see it kind of a separate resolution, a separate proposition, if you will.
Yes.
Debated separately.
It has to be filed separately. She's filing it separately. I don't know why she didn't number it this way, but I just texted her, and she said that it's being filed separately.
So that'll be an additional proposition?
Yes.
So do we have consensus on the first part? Over matters pertaining to safety protocols, operations regarding the prevention of spread of communicable disease?
Yes.
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 So what we could, what we could do, George, I'm sorry.
Say anything?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So, so A, we have consensus, B, we want it separated.
So then, let's see...
So the only thing that I'm thinking is, when we make this resolution, we may have, you know, we may have to... If, she said that she's putting in two separate forms, that to me is separated. You just don't want one piggybacked on the other, George, am I understanding you?
Yeah, I'd like each matter debated.
Separately.
Albany. Look, fundamentally, all of this is democracy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Stuff's going to get up there and get debated. What I don't like is whether it's like, in a process map, every square of a process map has to be a singular verb. You can't have, George will bring the file to Margaret, and she will then process it.
Right.
It has to be separate steps.
Okay.
This is blending two different steps into one, so I'd like that openly discussed and debated separately. Up there.
Okay, so then, should we...
So I would, I'm sorry, go on, Lauren.
No, 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 can we now discuss the next section then, which is opposing mandates from the state regarding curriculum outside of matters pertaining to academics?
Yeah. So that, that's the piece that George wants, if I'm understanding you, George, you're okay with it going forward, but you want it separate?
Correct.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Anybody else?
And just so that, just so that it's clear, you're all okay with it, which is great. My position, why I put that forward, is because that clause from resolved through the subjects is a very broad, wide-sweeping brush of resistance to quote-unquote mandates, and that's a slippery slope for me, because I don't know, because there could be a law, what my standard academic subjects are could be very different from somebody else's or something.
Okay.
That should, consensus should be debated and fleshed out.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so where does that leave us? Are we looking for, are we going to go around the room now and see who agrees and opposes and...
For B?
Yeah.
I'm okay with doing it George's way, and we'll have to specify that out when we make the motion. Excuse me. Can we do that, Susan, or no?
Well...
That we accepted the first part, but not the second part? And we want the second part to be separate?
Right, so, but, so there is no consensus on this second...
We haven't gotten around the room yet. It's me, George, and Lauren said yes, John, Michelle?
I say yes, separate.
Yes.
Separate, yeah, okay.
Yes, and separate.
Okay.
Yep, so I think we can just write it out that we'd like them as two separate propositions, and we agree to both.
Yes. Okay, okay.
We might even be able to put a Proposition 3 and a Proposition 4, B?
Yeah, I mean, however they want to do it, I think I have no problem with the debate occurring, and I think you have consensus of the two splits. But however they want to separate it out, it's fine.
Okay.
Sorry, the dogs just moved.
Do we want to move on to Proposition 4?
Yes. Lauren, you want to take one side? I've got these dogs.
Sure, sure. So Proposition 4 is the, is asking for NISBA to advocate for the adoption of parental rights legislation, protecting parents' fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their children, which includes, but is not limited to, management of education, medical care, moral, religious, and character training. And also the rights of being informed on the curriculum and what the district, you know, basically encouraging the parents' involvement in understanding the educational programs in the district. So this is also have a final theme, medical treatment that kids undergo and be a part of what is taught to them in schools or their local school boards.
So is the medical treatment going for, like, vaccinations? Or medical treatment is in, like, the nurse's office if something happens? Or both?
I think it's an, I mean...
An overall thing?
Yeah, I think it's a blending of all the issues on, purposefully, to try to, you know, expand, to understand more fully what's going on, I guess.
Well, I guess I'll go first. I would like to retain my parental rights in all areas. The government does not own my children, so I'm okay with it. And I think that, you know, society, you know, has boundaries, and the majority of us have lived by those boundaries, you know, as far as, you know, following our own personal medical doctors. And if we're all in school, then, you know, without, if your children are attending public school right now, we've all followed, you know, the, I would say, the normalized, you know, it's, I think to me, what's concerning is, in the climate that we're in, we can't just look at things the way they used to be three years ago. And I have, I have witnessed parental, deliberate parental exclusion. And I, you know, I don't want to tell a teacher how to teach, that's not my position. I don't want to tell a doctor how to be a doctor, but I also want to be able to maintain my own decision-making for my children. So I am for parental rights. And this, this would be supporting parental right legislation. So they don't write the legislation, that just means that if legislation comes to the legislative branch in the next session, that our, our wishes for NISBA would be that you would support that legislation and not fight it. That's basically what this proposition means. None of this, NISBA does not make law. None of this is law, none of this is even regulation. But, you know, when we could have looked to NISBA in these past two years to say, hey, NISBA, you know, we have a 0% COVID rate, let our kids play fall sports outdoors, NISBA, if they knew that that's what their membership wanted, could have lobbied for that. Instead, they lobbied the opposite direction. So that's the piece that's concerning for me, because we're not, we're not at the end of this tunnel yet. And I think that we have to, you know, sadly, we have to look at all of these propositions as, you know, what are we going to do the next time? So, you know, and our children in the state of New York, we're safe. So I think that that has to come into play, and I also think that we need to maintain the parental rights. That's my little spiel on it.
And the, I have a question where it says, and the curriculum? So in addition, parents should have the, uh, it just said some, oh, to promote parental involvement, providing access to curriculum and that they have the ability to withdraw their child from portions of school curriculum?
We do do that right now, do you know that?
That's what, well, that's what I figured, that that wasn't, like, that wasn't something that wasn't being done already. So this is really just for the choices of, I guess, how much do you, how much parental input does this allow then? You know what I mean, like...
It doesn't allow anything, though, that's the thing, is this isn't a law.
I know, it's next panel.
It's really saying, our district, and in my opinion, this states, our district supports our parents. We support parental involvement, we want them involved in the process. Now, we have a longstanding history of doing so. They are involved in all of our committees, they're involved in our hiring committees, they're involved in all of our activities. We've done a really good job of that. We are a pro-parent district, we are a pro-parent involvement district, we've proven that. But we're advocating to have NISBA support that. To have them, you know, when these, these certain legislatures' decisions come down, we want them to say, okay, well, our members are pro-parent involvement, as opposed to, we want to separate parents from school involvement, which has been the case.
Well, well, the parent organization of NISBA, which is the National School Board Association, called the parents terrorists. I mean, there's, you know, there's the choice. So I think it's a, it's a message to say, we are, we actively involve parents. I mean, they're involved in every single aspect, where, you know, every committee, there's usually more parents there than board members.
So I'm gonna, again, kind of walk a fine line, unfortunately. So the name parental rights, the concept, the way it's positioned, all of that, got it. I completely, I completely understand and appreciate that. And I get the idea of advocating for our parents in our district to have say over their children. I get that, no one's questioning that, I don't believe. Where I get worried and concerned is, and that's why, because well, I'm sure we'll have another public session eventually about, ultimately, if, as Margaret said, when, if and when legislation goes up, we're going to have another public comment period, I'm sure, about, we can all talk about legislation. I will, I'm okay as a consensus for the organization to go forward with something of this nature. The, unfortunately for me, the devil is in the details always. If I am of the belief that for my care and protection of my child at eight years old, I want her to be able to carry a firearm into a building for her own protection or some other weapon, there's, it's, there's extremes in all different directions.
But there's laws protecting that, George.
I, I understand that, but that's, the laws are protecting that, because people have made sure that we have specifics when it comes into the details of how a piece of legislation would be written pertaining to parental rights. That, that's what I'm saying, is I want to see the details. I want to understand what exactly, I'm just reserving that so that people don't say, well, George, you flip-flopped, you voted in favor of the resolution.
No, 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 I get that.
But when legislation comes around, I'm voting against the legislation publicly.
But we don't have access to vote on legislation, I think that's where I'm getting confused here. We don't vote on legis, on legislation. We don't advocate, we don't really have a body to advocate for legislation. This is our advocacy. So this is basically, all we're doing here is saying, our district would like NISBA to support parental rights.
Right.
We, this isn't us voting on any, any legislation that comes down. This isn't us even having a say or even going and lobbying ourselves, and we can do that as a district. I think that's a complete, separate conversation, which we've done, obviously, as a district. We've, we've taken stances on, on things that are happening. But this is strictly our propositions to be sent to NISBA, stating our position in hopes that they will lobby, should legislation come down, that they be in support of parental rights.
No, I completely understand that. What I am resisting, Lauren, what I am resisting is the way the proposition is written. It's asking for NISBA to support when and if, as Margaret said, do, legislation were to come before the legislative body that outlines something around parental rights. And what I'm saying is, when those come up, we're then going to be asked, if NISBA supported it, if NISBA follows through with listening to the districts and advocates for that, we may very well, in the course of our board business, have the topic come up that there's a piece of legislation, NISBA's considering it, do we want to talk about how we want to advocate for that? And what I am saying, I'm not, I refuse to look at things just simply in the now, I'm looking at things in the future. And what I'm saying publicly is, I am reserving the right to decide at the time of when any legislation is formally written around parental rights, that I may very well come out publicly with all of us, as we're talking about it, to say, hey, I'm not on board with that piece of legislation, because the way it's written is not satisfactory to me. That's all I'm saying.
George, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I, and I appreciate, because basically what you're doing is just allowing the process, the democratic process, to roll out. And I hear exactly what you're saying.
Right. Because the way it's constituted now, the way it's written, it's extreme, to what they want supported is extremely broad, and it's a slippery slope of content, and I don't know that I'm ready to assign a...
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that everything that we've been handed has been very broad.
That's, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly right. That's exactly where I'm going, Margaret, that's right.
So, anyway, okay, so I hear what you're saying, and I think that all of us reserve the rights to, you know, when and if, you know, and by the way, we don't vote on legislation, our elected officials do in Albany. And, you know, right now, there's a supermajority of one party up in Albany, so I think that, at the very least, what I hope for is something centric and something in the middle, something that everybody can come, you know, at the state level eventually to consensus on. I am so sorry about my dogs. Okay, Proposition 4, can we get, if we have consensus on moving forward with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sorry.
All right, so we have that. Now, number six is the religious exemption.
Number five.
I'm sorry, number five, just trying to get my dogs in. Number five, the religious exemption. They want to put a proposition forward, resolve that the New York State Board Association's advocate for the reinstatement of religious and moral objection to immunizations. The rationale, parents in confrontation with their family doctor have fundamental right to make decisions that are in the best interest of their child. School districts should not be placed in the position of policing family medical decisions.
I agree.
I agree, 100%. I agree 100%.
Discussion, discussion guys?
Michelle? You're muted.
I know, I like I like to make you guys try to read my lips. No, I'm good.
Yeah, again, I'm fine with the democratic process proceeding. I am, I just read, I'll reiterate one more time that depends on how that piece of legislation would be written and proceed, whether or not I would ultimately support that. So someone has a right to do whatever they, has a right to control their child and their life based upon religion or any other cultural, socio economic what they want. However, they also don't have the right to put my child or other children at risk through those actions. So it's it's kind of a complicated question. It's not just simple, but for in terms of proceeding for debate, I'm fine with it debate being debated up at Syracuse.
Thank you. All right, so we have consensus for five and then six. This is, I'm just going to give you a little back history because I don't like the title of this, single occupancy zoning. Basically, in January, the governor tried to push through the budget, not through the legislature, to make it illegal for basically dezone the state from having single occupancy homes. It was fought very from, you know, the legislature, the legislature said, wait a minute, you're circumventing us, you can't just put that into the budget, and she pulled it out. The if if homes no longer had zoning for single occupancy, it would be an enormous burden on every single community. Because that would mean that anybody could rent anything on their property. And it would just be, you know, basically an influx that the infrastructure of schools would not be able to handle. So that is the purpose of this proposition, asking NISBA to oppose that legislation. They believe that that legislation is coming back around. And that the legislation would eliminate single occupancy zoning for all localities in the entire state. So that's the backstory on the single occupancy zoning, and I'll open it up for discussion.
That's what I'm gonna happen, so I agree with the position.
Is it currently up to each municipality whether they have single zoning or not within their within their town, like the town of Oyster Bay makes that determination?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's, they were taking that power away from them, George. That's actually who fought.
That's what I wanted to understand.
Yeah, the town supervisors all band together and they had, it was like cross aisle, like, you know, all town supervisors were like, wait a minute, you know, this is this is out of bounds. So they did push back. So that's who would make that decision and this legislation would take it from them.
I'm I'm for the proposition.
All right.
Agreed.
I'm gonna put a hotel.
What?
What, John?
Put a hotel on my property.
Yeah, John, didn't I see your house on Airbnb, my man?
Only take, only take parents with kids who are more.
All right, guys. Thank you very much for this debate. I appreciate, I appreciate this board very, very much. I'm just going to reiterate, just so that we're all on the same. I'm really, I'm sorry, it's on the next page. Oh, the most important.
You were thanking us prematurely.
I was, I didn't go to the next page. I apologize.
So wait, was there consensus on proposition six?
There was, Susan.
Yeah.
Okay, the last one, proposition seven, sex education. Resolves that the New York State School Board Association oppose the passage of A6616, which is currently, you know, I think it, I think it's in committee, it might be out of committee up in Albany. The rationale is dictating comprehensive sex education for all K-12 students from Albany is not in the best interests of our students or local communities. This is another example of overreach of the legislature and the New York State Education Department. So.
I do want to mention, it's it's not necessarily well titled.
I agree.
A6616 is not sex education. It's sexuality education, K-12, which is very different. We already have current standing legislation for sex education, health education. This is entirely separate bill handling sexuality education, starting in K, K-12. And I don't know if anybody has had a chance to read the bill, but it's basically saying you will either adopt the New York State prescribed curriculum, sexuality education, K-12, or will put forward curriculum that aligns with the guidelines for their sexuality education, K-12. So I I don't know why it was titled this way, but I just want to make the distinction that we already have very comprehensive legislature surrounding and and surrounding all sex education and health education. As well as the district, I would say, has a fairly robust health and sex ed curriculum that we have in place.
So do you not think this proposition is necessary?
Oh, no, I do. I agree with the proposition 100%. I oppose the passage of A6616. I just want to make sure, you know, the fact that that's in there is is important. But I just want to make sure to note that this isn't a broad opposition of sex ed. If that makes sense.
Well, they should, they should, they should put the right bill number in there that correspond with they're trying to get a resolution for.
No, the bill number is correct.
The bill number is correct in there. It's just the name of the proposition says sex education. It it should be named sexuality education. The bill 6616 is sexuality education in schools.
So Lauren's saying that the title should reflect the name of the bill.
Correct.
Yeah.
And it's currently in assembly committee, just to.
Yeah, I thought it was in committee. Yeah, I, my issue is that we, and I agree with you on all of your points, we have a very comprehensive sex education program. I, my concern is that this one now goes down to K and it's.
I can't, I can't go to K.
It's very, very young and it's very, it's very graphic. Very graphic. Things that, you know, I don't, I don't think that a five year old's mind is ready for.
Nope.
So I I am for that.
It can't go there.
Discussion for everybody else. I'm gonna put myself on mute so you don't hear my dog. Should we just see for consensus?
Yep.
George, Michelle?
I'm good.
I'm fine for debate.
Okay, so so the, so now I can thank all of you for doing all of this. Thank you very much. I'm moving to get away from these barking dogs. The the resolution, this is where I think we just might need to Ken and Susan tweak something. And I don't know if we're able to do that on the fly like this, but the resolution says the board adopts a resolution to authorize the board president of Massapeak Republic Schools to submit the following resolutions on behalf of the Board of Education of Locust Valley to be submitted for consideration at the NISBA Annual Convention in October 2022. And then we would have listed one, three, four, five, six, seven. How do we parcel out three A and three B? We would like, they they are being filed separately, but that we want them for sure filed separately. Should we write it that way in the resolution?
Yes.
I mean, you could say something like, you know, with the provision that you know, the two resolutions in proposition three are submitted separately, something like that.
You're muted, Margaret.
We have to make a motion on this. So is that how I should word it, Ken?
I think like Susan, like Susan said.
Okay, say that again, provided.
So with the provision that the resolutions
In propositions?
In proposition three are submitted separately.
Maybe the two resolutions?
What? Yeah.
Yeah. Are submitted.
Oh, the guy that makes it. You got it last night?
Are submitted as separate items or something?
Okay, can't hear Margaret.
The board, I'm just gonna run this through and then we'll make a motion. The board adopts a resolution to authorize the board president of Massapeak Republic Schools to submit the following resolutions. Proposition one, three, four, five, six, and seven. With, oh, provided that proposition three is submitted separately as to distinct propositions.
Great.
Yes, is that okay? Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, okay, so that's going to be the motion, the resolution. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, do I read it again in its entirety, Ken?
You don't have to, right, Susan?
No, we got it.
All right.
Take a vote on it, is that what?
Yep. Any questions?
Oh, no.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
All opposed? John, are you there?
John, you're on mute.
We don't need John, though, because we have four of us right now, too.
Yeah, no.
He should vote. He should vote.
John, are you still there? I think we lost John.
John?
Bueller.
Can someone text him?
George, you got it?
Yeah.
I texted him like three days ago, too, about Olivia when it first came out and he hasn't responded, so he's not.
I wonder if he got called away at work or something.
I mean, I could just mark it not.
John's calling me.
Oh, geez.
Hold on.
Do we lose Margaret, too?
Yeah, she's coming.
One was calling here.
Yep, she's coming in.
George, how was Disney? Was it crowded?
Uh, Disney was. I just want to remind everybody, the meeting is streaming. Meeting's streaming.
Scratch that door.
You're on mute, Margaret.
John just called. He wanted to give his vote in through me. I told him he couldn't. He somehow got bounced off and then I got bounced off. So I guess we'll take the vote without him.
I'm just saying not present at the.
Yes, okay.
Okay, you need to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting. Michelle, George, thank you very much and thank you very, very much. And I did just want to say that Brian Nolan was unable to attend today because he is at work. He asked me to send his regards. All right, thank you very, very much, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Have a great day.
You, too. Bye bye.
Everybody.
Bye.